Okay, so the work session, we started at right at nine o'clock. I asked to pause it for just a moment. My apologies if anybody is tuning in, hearing this. We had some computer issues, so we had to pause it. Booted back up and now we're back online. So all members, all members are present. Myself, Mr. Pennock is, he's on the call in for us. What's it called?
Livestream.
He's on the livestream, there you go. Mr. Chicken Eddie's here, Mr. Patriarch is on the livestream. Livestream, and then we have our field advisor Jeremy Oswe and some other folks here from the administration. So let's, I assume, I assume.
I'll take Oswe, I'll take Oswe too, I'm good.
Well, like I told you, that's, that's from my old, old days.
Yup, yup.
I know, I know, I was so close, alright. I know, I'm still called Hilliard and everything else along the way, so it's all good.
Yeah, no matter what you call me, I'm here.
Yes, you're right. As long as we pay the bills, okay. So for now, I'll start the meeting off and go over to Mr. Manry, our township administrator.
Alright, first item I have for the chat, I updated the list of properties from our meeting last week. I haven't sent it yet because I'm trading voicemails with John Albers to question whether we can put in the three residential houses in the B1 district. It's just, we're gonna talk this afternoon, and then I'll have the updated list for you. So then I think the next step is to have, to get together and discuss the economic development plan and see how we're gonna try to finalize it from the draft that Mentor gave us. So if you wanna pick a time for the next chat meeting, we could do that.
Well, I would think since Kevin's writing it, we should ask him to come to the meeting, so maybe propose an email, a couple of dates for all of us, and then we could do it that way.
Okay.
But I think he should be here, because we have instructions on what we'd like to see in it. I think it's easier if he's with us.
Okay.
For that meeting, should we get together, you know, a half an hour or an hour before Kevin shows up? So that we can have a discussion, so that when he shows up, it's not like we're having a free-for-all discussion?
If you'd like, make sure.
... disservice those, so you don't have to answer the door if you want to, it's not like they're walking in these people's homes. So I, I think that, I think that we should, first start off, and they come to my house, I don't have to answer the door, you know? But I think the longer we stop people from the ability to make an income, we're doing a disservice.
Is there any guidance from the state on this? What's the, what?
Not that I have seen, not specifically about transient vendors.
Yeah, I guess I'm on board with, I think kinda what Gabe said, and maybe a different reasoning behind it, but I don't wanna limit their ability to conduct business. And if you don't wanna answer the door, you don't answer the door. So, I'm fine with June 1st.
Well, I won't be answering my door, but um...
That's me, but some people might, you know, and I just, you know.
Okay, it's just, it's internal guidance for us, and we'll tell people when to call it, they can apply on June 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's nothing stopping us from doing it, so it's just your guys' call.
Okay. John Music called me yesterday. He wants us to discuss the Center Park Estates project at the public meeting, so he has it on the record, what's going on, because he's been working on this since 2006. As he pointed out to Karen yesterday, as he pointed out to Billy yesterday, and as he pointed out to me yesterday.
Bell Point?
Or Bell Point, yep. So Chuck helped out this morning.
I placed a phone call to Jim Gill, spoke with him, asked him to get it moving over at the office, Lake County Engineers Office. He said he's going in this morning, and when he gets there, he will discuss it with them to find out what's going on, the status, and we'll get it moving along.
What Chuck's referring to is that the next step is, there are easements, pockets of easements here and there throughout the Center Park Estates project where the county wants to do work. So those areas, we know we can go work on. We need to know where those are, so we can go to the other property owners where we're gonna need to work and get their permission to work. We can't process people who don't have an easement until we know who does have an easement. So Tim Miller sent a request to the Engineers Office two months ago for, you know, could you tell us where the easements are? So we can go on to our next step of contacting the other property owners and getting permission. And that's what Chuck called Gill's about this morning was, yep, could you guys get that list of easements for us, so we can keep moving along, right?
Was there any flooding over there this weekend, with all the rain we had on, what, Saturday or Sunday night and Monday?
According to John, there was flooding in his place, I think.
I didn't, I didn't see any on the road and at the senior center, I don't know, I mean, not senior center, but uh...
Assistant, assistant living?
Living, late night, I didn't see any that day, but...
But Friday night, the Sheriff's Department called, and we got a couple of issues. One was a drainage ditch and a screen that was plugged in the Kingsboro subdivision, and then as always, the North Dome, the Barton ditch at North Dome. That pipe got blocked again, but we were able to take care of those. I'm not aware of any street flooding on Friday night. Sunday night, most of the rain was on the east side, and there was a lot of problems over there, but the west side over in this area didn't get as much rain on Sunday.
You guys got more than us?
We got, we got nailed.
Sunday rained, Sunday rained all day at my house.
Sunday, there was probably two and a half inches of rain in an hour.
Wow, I was gonna say, it rained all day in my house, but...
So what about where John lives at, what's that? He told me that it got us right up to the, like a couple inches from his patio door, but it never got any higher than that. Which is kinda where it always seems to go, right? And so I asked him, I said, "Has it ever come in?", and he said, "No", and I said, "Well, that's probably as high as it was ever going to get, because there's a runoff." Yeah, I've done that one happening, yes. So, alright. So let's see what, let's see what Jim comes back, hopefully they can get that question answered for us, and we can get moving, because that'll get the Center Park Estates area moving again, hopefully.
Did, hey Chuck?
Yeah, bud.
Did, did Mr. Gill's happen to say anything about Madison Avenue?
No.
Okay.
I didn't broach that question, so, no.
Okay.
I can follow up, he told me he's gonna call me back later, so if I hear from him, I'll follow up with that, let you know what I hear.
I think, I think Mike and I have already done a good job of upsetting the, maybe not Jim Gill's, but others in, in his office over that, over that road closure, so.
Ask him, just ask him for information, and they...
Yeah.
Of course, that asking for information upsets people, I guess, but when we have to answer residents, what are you gonna do?
Right.
That's part of the job, so it's alright. We'll find out, though, we could find out if there's any updates on that too. So what update are you leaving it with him in your last conversation?
They had not had the results, they were supposed to get the results from their consultants last week, so supposedly they should have known last week what the problem is, so then they know what to do. I did not call them last week, because I'd called them the week before, and I thought, I'll give them to the end of the week to tell us. So Tracy knows that I'm anxious to find out. I'm careful about calling too often, because it does end up setting them there.
I would agree, Mike.
So we just wanna lay this out there, if they know anything?
Well, yeah, well, they, they have to know something, it's been three weeks or four.
How much they want to share, so...
They know what the problem is, and I think as the community, they should tell us what the problem is. Now, I don't know what the solution is, because I'm a promise, but, but the silence is frustrating.
Okay, alright. Okay, so let me go back, back you up on this transit vendor thing.
Yeah.
So can we put something out publicly that this, we're going to do that beginning June 1st, do you mind, and just get it out there, so people aren't surprised if someone starts knocking on doors, if they choose to knock on doors?
Yeah, I'm just saying, we're starting to restart a transient vendor.
I think it's a bad business decision for them to do that, but...
Yeah, I'm not surprised they're so anxious to, but this is their season.
Yeah, this is how they acquire so much of their business in this late springtime, and they've already missed two months of time being door-to-door, that's why I'm saying, I feel like you're just, we're just pulling them back. Really, because once you get into June, they're done, they've already missed two services this spring and the early summer, so...
Okay. Alright, what we have, Mike?
Okay. Another event came up yesterday, groups are, non-profit groups are starting to call us, "When are you gonna open the meeting room, so that our group can come back and meet again?" Here's the challenge, cleaning. This, this room is used four times a week. We, we don't have a cleaning person on call at the minute.
So what we should do is, I think, I was thinking about this, is, would that person charge forty bucks? Sanitize?
Oh, Chuck's secret, yeah.
That, for the time being, they're free still to use the room, but there's a forty dollar sanitation fee, and we hire, so that guy would come in and sanitize the room, and they pay for it after he queues. Put the ball in their court, we're not charging them to use the room, but the township can absorb all the cleaning costs to sanitize, but if they adhere to whatever, you know, orders are out there, if they adhere to those, and they pay for the sanitation company to come in and sanitize the room and the bathroom, then so be it, whatever that might be, forty, fifty bucks.
Do they just come in and spray stuff, or do they actually wipe things down?
He sprays.
It's a fogger type of thing, it's pretty, it's pretty effective, from what I understand, that a lot of the companies are using, they come in those suits and they spray everything, and it's a, a mist that pretty much lays on everything and kills the germs. As well or better than wiping, because it's a broad spread versus spot cleaning.
What's like a bug bomb?
Kinda, they come with like backpack things and spray like a misty foam, like mist that covers everything.
Also, can that be done before you start getting mildew built up on your...
Well, it's an alcohol-based thing, so I think it's like, it's like, just like you would use like a sanitizer, it sits in it, you know, yeah, it just basically evaporates.
Yep.
But...
They're doing it pretty early, I know in some places, and I know like hotel rooms, for instance, they're doing it, I think, like, my buddy travels to work, and he was saying a lot of hotels are, they won't let people stay in a room for forty-eight hours after you're in there, because they go in and they spray and sanitize, so they're doing it like after every stay in this hotel room, so...
So how often do you wanna leave the township all open with that?
Well, I mean, how many requests do we really have?
Oh, this meeting is used four times a week easily, but when we closed it, sometimes five.
No, but, so one day a week, you know, we're not doing it like, you're not having a ton of people trying to get in here, it's the normal groups, is what, is your after?
It, it, it's the groups that we're using before, some for each groups, some of the Girl Scouts, there's a couple of Christian groups that, you know, their motorcycle club and that, so there's a variety of groups. Some are small, some are larger. I would think it'd wanna clean every time they're in here.
I would think so too.
So if somebody comes in Monday, they gotta get cleaned too, so they can see Chris do that? Is he, is he that flexible?
If not, if not, the guys that clean Fairport will be able to do it, and they're, they're doing it for...
Before we, before we agree to open it up, can we follow up on those two points? So if somebody uses it, it's gotta be cleaned the next day, if it can't be cleaned the very next day, then it can't be used.
Right.
Well, and doesn't it have to sit, sit unoccupied for a while and be then eventually aired out or something?
I believe he, he said two hours, I think is what Chuck said.
Yeah, they're, they're using a pretty high, uh...
Well, on that...
Well, why don't we just, why don't we just cancel it for a while, go another month?
Comes in, he's worried about those of us working here, if he springs...
I mean, he'll do the room, they close the door.
He's gonna do the hallway, that entranceway, I, I particularly don't wanna be in the building when he's spraying.
When do they clean?
When they do our normal cleaning, it's at three-thirty in the afternoon.
Okay.
He catches us, and we leak, so we leave one hour.
So I mean, would it even be better than, we'll set it up that he can come here at four-thirty, when you guys are leaving, and sanitize it and leave, and that way, nobody's here, so nobody has to, uh...
If he's available.
Okay, and I'll, the other company I know, if he's not available, there's another company, like I said, that did all Fairport's, they'll be able, they're available anytime, so if he can't do it...
I get a feeling that people are not, might, might not even wanna come if they know they're gonna have to pay forty dollars, they're only coming because it's free.
Alright, well, then they don't come, so, but some are itching to get in here, and we'll give them the option, and if they don't wanna do it, they don't do it.
I don't know, my thought, we didn't have it open to public use up till about a year ago, I mean, let's just leave it closed for another couple months, and then reevaluate, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see a big issue with that.
I mean, if it's being cleaned and sanitized, what is the issue?
Scheduling here, scheduling, and, and us being available.
To what, which portion of it?
Well, somebody letting them in, somebody's gotta let them in, right?
Mike, why don't you, I'll tell you what, I mean, why don't you just find out in the next two weeks? Get a, get the, get the circumstances worked out, get the details, who can do what, when they can do it, make sure it fits your schedule, Township Hall's gonna remain open under normal conditions, you're not gonna change any of that.
Right.
And if this can't be resolved around our work schedule, then, then it's off. If it can't be worked around our schedule, then, then we can comply, I'm, I'm okay with complying. But there's gonna have to be some very rigid guidelines, and as Mike said, paying forty dollars, a lot of people aren't gonna wanna do it anyhow, so let's see what happens.
Right, no big groups, so...
Or fifty dollars, whatever it costs, I mean, they're not gonna wanna do it anyhow, so let's, let's see what happens, and we'll go from there, but next meeting, come back on.
Okay, and I'll send you the guy's number.
Okay. And the last item I have is Chuck got an email about 104 Helene this morning.
I got one too.
Yeah, we all got it, yeah.
Yeah.
The house, the house was vacant for a very long time, and was not for sale. It sat vacant, my friend, she bought a house across the street, and we had talked about that house, and she says, "It's vacant, it's not for sale, nobody knows what's going on with it, this was last year." And then she actually sent me a text, I don't know, a couple months ago, because we were talking about it, and she goes, "Oh, hey, they just put a sign up, it's finally for sale." So I would hope that, it's a, it's a nice house, just needs work, in a nice neighborhood, one would hope that it's going to, uh...
You're talking about the Little House?
No, 104 Helene.
See, Mike, on the...
That's the Little House, well, there's two of them, there's a big house faces Madison, and then there's two buildings behind it.
Wait a minute, Helene is off of...
There's, there's two places, there's a private drive off of Madison Avenue.
That's the one.
And then there's the one, 104 Helene, 104 Helene has been sold, I've talked to the guy that bought it.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about, probably that's what she's talking about, isn't it?
No, she's talking about the one off of Madison Avenue, the private one.
104, there's 104 Helene on Madison Avenue?
No.
No, that's got, those, that's ten seventy two.
Those are Madison Avenue Drive, or numbers?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I thought, because that, that, there are two buildings that have been empty for a long time, I thought that's what she was talking about.
No, 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 this is off of overlooked, there's a development that they built up over...
Can you see my?
It's sold, I talked to the guy that bought it.
Okay, there you go. I knew it was gonna sell, it's a nice house.
Is he gonna, is he moving in there?
If I could flip it, or... It's a, it's prime for flipping, it's a nice house and a nice neighborhood, just needs updating, you know?
This guy's a policeman in Cleveland, and he's gonna live there.
Okay.
I'm just wondering why, that she's complaining this morning, if it's been...
She probably doesn't know yet, because it's not, like I said, it just went up a month or so ago, with all this, right when this all started, so I'm assuming it didn't get much traction, and now, as things are opening back up, like Billy said, it probably got some interest and it's sold, so...
Is that the one we've been cutting the grass?
Yeah.
We've been cutting the grass, I thought it was on a private drive.
No, those people actually have Madison Avenue addresses, they're like ten seventy Madison Avenue, but they named it, must, I don't know if it's somebody's last name, but there's a sign that says Helene, I don't know, is anyone official?
Well, the township historian could tell you.
No, it's Madison Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah, can you guys see my screen? Man, that's the house, that's 104.
We don't see your screen.
You don't see your screen, you gotta scroll to the bottom.
I mean, it's sold, at this point, so just tell her it's sold, and that I would think that, uh, there we go, yeah, like I said.
Yeah, that's what you're looking for in Google.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it was a nice house, it just was, the bank never put it up for sale, so finally they did, and then somebody jumped on it, as I expected from that nice house, that's what I'm saying.
It's a very nice house, yeah.
It just needs updating, because I don't think anybody's been there in a couple of years.
Probably four.
Four, okay, right.
Alright, so Chuck, since you contacted her, you were the first to respond to her email, do you wanna follow up with her today?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, that just makes sense that way, since you made that first contact.
Okay.
That sold pretty quick then, I figured.
So the house sold, do you know, and the guy, you anything more than that, other than that?
No, but I would assume it generally are thirty, sixty, thirty to sixty day, you know, occupancy after you, you close, so I would think that he's gonna be in, and who knows, the guy that was walking around, might have been him, checking out the neighborhood, you know, they just said that...
It was probably his home inspector.
Okay.
I talked to the guy a couple of times, and he told me he's, it's going to close soon, and then when he moves in, he's gonna contact me about some drainage concerns that he has.
Okay.
I mentioned to him that if, if the grass needs cut, he should probably cut it, so we don't have to send a violation notice, so...
There you go.
So how did you get in touch with the guy, I'm curious. He contacted me when he was thinking about buying a house, because he was concerned about a drain in the yard, so...
Do you know this guy?
No.
He just happened to contact you?
Yes, and I don't know, I mean, I guess he just contacted Pageville Township, so, again, he'd kinda, he'd been working with Stormwater too about it, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I've talked to him a couple of times, and he, he told me it closed, it was, he wanted it auctioned.
Okay.
Good enough, good enough, alright, I'll pass along what, what we've heard there. And that brings to a conclusion my agenda items.
Alright. Well, Chief, I've been skipping you regularly here, so we'll, we'll probably get to talking.
I don't have a lot, but the one that I have's pretty big. We, Station Three is a mess, okay? They, they went up and started working on those dormers that they initially thought was gonna cost them about twelve thousand, that's what they said. They got, once they got in there, started looking at everything and tearing stuff apart, the roof is rotten underneath it, the, the whole roof needs replaced, basically.
Of the whole station?
Of the front of the base, like the, yeah, that whole area, that, that, it's huge.
Another ten, twelve grand?
What's that?
Another ten, twelve grand?
Um, well, yeah, it's about, they originally, originally said twelve, and now he said it's gonna be about thirty-four, I've got the estimates here.
Twelve for the dormers, thirty-four with everything?
Thirty-four with everything, that's, yeah, that's, it's twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand dollars more.
Are they communicating this to the insurance company too?
This is not insurance.
It's not insurance.
This is rotten wood from water leaking in for eleven years probably, since it was built, it's been going in between the layers, the inside and outside, and just recently started showing on the inside.
Is that contract being picked, Mike?
Yeah, well...
Got a good deal.
They went up to do the, to do the dormers, and the roof was so soft, they really couldn't even bar handle it there, so, they sent a ton of pictures, I put them, you know, a few of them on the drive, I've got some here if you wanna see them, but...
So is, are the dormers gonna continue to cause us an issue?
No, because they're, they're gonna, everything, they're gonna seal everything up, everything's going to be built, so that there's flashing the proper way and all that. The problem was, at the bottom of the windows, they weren't properly flashed, the water was running down the front and was going right under the shingles, so it, it rotted all the wood underneath. So once we get all that replaced on the front, the one in the back, looks like we might have to do one in the back, not the whole roof, like, like we had to do on the front. So there'll be some repairs eventually in the back, front's gotta be done. As far as, what did Josh was gonna, theirs was, here's where, yeah, here's, they started peeling this off, and this, this wood here, they couldn't even walk on, and they started making holes further down, just to, you know, do visuals, and it's all rotten. And right in here, that's where the water ran in, Sheriff's just...
Under right underneath then, right?
Under right underneath, like you said, it wasn't something we noticed inside for a long time, but we finally ended, ended up getting, like in the last year or so, was staining on the inside, where we actually see water stains up there. Uh, that's how bad that wood is, it's just completely rotten. Those windows, they have to take those off, those are getting replaced with new windows, so everything's getting replaced up there. Well, that's, that's another, that would be an option, but...
How much would that save?
I, I don't...
Making a, making a roof?
I don't know.
You know what I'm saying? Cutting on, just making the roofs?
Yeah, I think at, at this point, I'm not sure it would save that much, I can ask, but, just...
Well, those huge windows are gonna be cheap.
Um, he's already got those priced, those are in here four hundred dollars a piece, so they're not...
They're just solid windows?
Yeah, they're solid windows with the, you know, like, a decorative thing in there. Okay, so, yeah, four hundred dollars a piece is what those were.
Let me ask you a question, can we, before we get into, I see the top of those dormers have a metal roof?
Yes.
Can, have we looked at just doing metal roof on this thing?
Well, no, we haven't, simply because, well, the only, he's only, there's a picture there, he's only replacing from the front of the dormers down, because we need to do all the...
All that's thirty-four thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's, but that's inside and out, he's gotta do the ceiling, the ceiling inside, there's a ceiling, then there's insulation, then there's a roof. He's gotta replace the ceiling, the insulation, the roof, and those panels, they were like a sandwich, they were panels that they put in, put in place, and then put the roof over them. The, the company that made those panels isn't even, doesn't make them anymore, they're not in business anymore, so he's trying to, he couldn't find them, he's gonna have to make all those panels himself. Like, basically, he's just gonna have to build his own sandwich, he's gonna have to put a piece of plywood, two-by-fours, put foam in between them, and put them back together, and put them up. And it's only for the front half of the dormers, not the whole thing. There would be more if we had to do...
Unless, unless it was tear it out, repair it, and just lay, uh, you know, um, metal roof, then we don't have to worry about it for fifty years.
I...
You know?
Yeah.
Can you, just ask him, what would it cost, to just take those out, and metal roof that, that over the garage?
Okay.
Just get an estimate, I want that one.
Wouldn't you have to do the backside, then the whole thing?
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just seeing, just to alleviate any, any possible issues in the future, get rid of those things, just make a roof, nice metal roof over the garage, you know? And then that way, for fifty years, nobody has to worry about anything.
Okay, I can find that out.
Just see what that's gonna cost.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The, the good part of the, the insurance part of the job is doing, going well, they've got the one, the northern side, they've got all the foam up that's ready to, actually pretty close to being ready to, to paint all of that, so...
Why wouldn't this be part of that insurance claim?
Well, because what the insurance claim was wind damage on the building, this, this wasn't wind damage, this is...
Insurance doesn't handle, doesn't pay for, you guys can't, uh, hiring a poor contractor.
Right. Here's the, this is the inside where the staining was at, and this is all, from here to here, at the front of the...
Oh my gosh, look at that, yeah.
Yeah, from the dormers forward, has to be replaced inside and out, that's why it's thirty-some thousand.
My, I, here's the thing, no matter what they say, it's just like in our business, skylights pose a big problem, no matter how well you put them in, any time you're on a roof where there's weather, you know, snow, ice, wind, and you have multiple areas seams, that, that, no matter how well you think you do it, it creates an issue, and a possibility for an issue, rather.
Right.
So that's why I wanna see, we alleviate those, and just metal roof the garage, and never have to worry again, you know, would we be better, you know?
Right. There's some, that's, each one of those dormers has, not as bad as that one, but they all have staining in front of them.
But Chief, you were saying they're not replacing the whole roof, it's just from the dormers down, correct?
From the dormers forward, yes.
Well, it'd be a fortune to put a metal roof on the whole thing, wouldn't it?
Well, they're rebuilding all the dormers, new windows, all that kinda stuff is going in there, so do we alleviate all of that, and what would the cost be to just tear them out and put a roof on? That's what I'm getting at. Instead of spending the time and money to rebuild the dormers, take them out and just plywood over it and put a metal roof on, I mean, we're talking thirty-four thousand just to do those three dormers and that roof underneath them, that's...
But that's gonna take away from the look of the building, the whole design of the building, though.
Well, I understand, but...
Why would you do that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll check with him to see if it's, if it's significant to save, but I, I mean, I think right now, just, I, my goal is just hopefully to get this fixed and get, move on to the rest of the building, you know? But this is, this is gonna be, I mean, it's a lot more money than we planned, but...
So what are we gonna pay for it all, you gotta do it?
Yeah, well, it's gonna, gonna have to come out of, we've got, I think, ten thousand in, in improvements for the station, and then we had, I was gonna get a car this year, I just won't. There we go, I mean, we have it in equipment fund, so, I mean, that's where we'll have to take that.
Is there any NOPE grants available for, uh, you know?
Machinery, equipment, and furniture?
Yeah, there's plenty in there.
Was there a NOPE grant for energy, if we get an energy efficient, uh...
There is, and he was asking what we wanted to do.
We, can we do that, and...
Yeah, I mean, maybe the, the roofing material may be, that has to be, for energy savings, well, it is getting insulation replaced, so...
That's what I'm getting at.
And the new windows as well, right, I'm sure, new windows...
Right, exactly, can we, some of this, we claim some of this under the energy, uh...
Mike, if this is for you.
Nope?
Under the NOPE, they wanna know if, if, the question is, can we use any of these, these repairs to fire Station Three under the NOPE grant?
So we're putting in new energy-efficient windows, new insulation, uh, new roofing for better, you know?
I can ask.
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
Yeah, and anything, Mike, any portion that would qualify, Mike, even if it is a couple of the four hundred dollar windows and, you know, any bit here and there.
Yeah, if we can pick up a couple of grants, save it out of, uh, out of the budget, then.
Okay.
It is better than anything, so.
Frank, we, we need to talk later, so I can make a list of what I wanna ask NOPE about. Okay, I have, it's, it is itemized, so we can go through that, I know there's insulation in there, there's.
Yeah.
Windows in there.
I just need to know what.
Okay.
Yeah, you know what, this, this friggin', uh, architect, we already sued the guy the one time because of, eh, just horrible, we paid that guy so much money.
I, I mean, that might be a Jeremy question, I don't know what the.
Well, you're too late now.
Yes.
I know.
We have a ten-year look back on that.
Yeah, how old's that building, fifteen years?
It's eleven.
Eleven years?
Yeah. Talk to the insurance adjuster about that, or no, the, the guy from the roofing, the repair company, about could we go back on him? Said there's a ten-year limit on that, and we were in the eleventh year at the time we had that conversation. Right, that's what he said, so we're going on twelve, yeah.
That's obviously been a problem before that, though.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's been leaking, like I said, it just started the staining stuff, we could actually see it, started coming through, but before that, we couldn't see that, so.
Yeah, that guy was a joke, we gave that guy so much money to make that building look so nice, and.
Uh, yeah, I don't think, I don't think Concord's gonna use him, I'm just sure.
Oh, I doubt it, I think he wouldn't. I, I'd give him an F.
It is a nice looking building.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, except for it doesn't work, I mean, uh, uh, they, they didn't even have the proper, uh, grading inside the floor of the, of the, uh, service department building, I mean, the whole thing was a disaster. Who hired that guy? Anybody still around? He was, he came from, uh, the old chief really liked him, he did some really fancy stuff like in Columbus or something like that.
They, they had, it took me to dinner.
Who was the old chief's top lieutenant, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Well, it's on you, Frank.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on.
Moving on. Um, we did get, uh, I know I keep mentioning this, but, uh, the Fire Office subgrant, they ordered our equipment, um, I was hoping it would, it would show up already, there's forty thousand dollars worth of education equipment that they ordered for us, and, uh, should, should arrive any day, but it's, we're waiting on that, when we get that, um, we'll get some pictures and.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, and then, um, we're just doing all a lot of online training now, and we can't really do much training because I don't wanna, we're still not putting our crews together, so, our training's limited to what we can do on shift, and that, and that, uh, it works out pretty well that now that, what the guys are doing is they're doing video conferences and they're sharing that information to each other and stuff, so it works out pretty, actually, it's a lot better, we're getting used to it. By the time that we open everything back up, we won't need it, but.
Right.
We're still gonna comply with that, those ISO requirements that, uh?
That's what we're working on, that's why we're doing online training and stuff, is we're trying to get those ISO requirements done without leaving the stations, which is more difficult, but it can't be done, and we're doing it, so, yeah, that's what's going on with that. Squad's still out, I was hoping it'd get back, but any day that should be coming back from the paint. Uh, our new engine, we had, we went into service for two days, uh, when they got all the trainings done on it, all the equipment's mounted on, everything's good to go, they drove it for two days and an engine light came on, that, uh, we called the Sutman people, they sent the tech right up, took care of it, so, we, you know, the next day, so it was, we didn't even mess around with it, we just had them, made them come up and do it.
How long is that warranty, a year?
Yeah.
A year as a rep, or are you gonna accept it or are you?
It's a year's, year after delivery, yeah, so it's a year from the day we accepted it, basically, which is the same day it was delivered.
So, Chief, it looks like, over at Station Two, they've got both engines in the bay still, is the, is the reserve staying there for a while, or is it just a temporary thing?
It's staying there temporarily, um, there's still some little things that they're moving over now and then, um, nothing that we can move it, it really doesn't matter, but they, for, for now, until they, until we're sure the engine light's gonna stay off and everything's gonna be running good, it's just gonna stay there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's temporary. Um, that's, it, it makes things pretty crowded over there, so I'm sure the guys will be, like, like to get it out of there as soon as possible, but I think once this one's in there a month or so, and they're, everything's running well with it, then they'll go. Alright, um, that's, basically, that's, uh, we've, we've got a couple of grants out right now, we still, uh, apply for the defibrillators, things like with the AFG grant, and there is another AFG grant coming up this month for fire prevention, things that we, we hopefully fund our smoke detector program for next year, but we'll go for that, so.
Alright, well, the picture of Gordon and picture says Jag.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's Jag Nish, um, and I wish I could say his last name, but that was the guy that gave us two thousand dollars for the K nine program. Um, he has a company over here called Dizer Corporation, and he, like I said, he, he, he gave us a thousand dollars last year, this year he gave us two thousand, asked us to put it toward the K nine program, so Gordon went over there, got his picture with the dog and.
And he's gonna fund fully moving forward, right?
Yeah, that's what he talked about, I'll, I'll wait and see, I mean, we haven't gotten that money, so we'll see, but he said, from this time on, he asked Gordon how much our budget was for the K nine, our budget's four thousand dollars for the K nine, and he said, well, I'll just fund it from here on, and so we'll see if he does, that's what he said.
Wow, very nice of him.
Yeah, so.
Where's the physical stat, what's the physical?
Dizer Corporation, it does, uh, so, it's a software engineering company, right here on Pater Avenue.
The Plaza X and Padres.
Right, right there.
Crystal Plaza?
Emerald.
Emerald.
Yeah, Emerald Plaza.
Gotcha, just last one.
That'd be a good story for the next newsletter that comes out, Mike.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
Sure.
Especially if.
Anything for him yet? What's that?
We do, we.
Well, I said to do a resolution, but I don't know if he did.
Uh, Mike was working on it, so, yeah, we can put the story in with the picture, probably, that'd be good.
I agree.
That's great.
Nice.
Yeah.
What a nice story that is.
Alright, that's it. Okay. Um, had Mr. Thompson send it next to me?
Okay, we're not ready to roll. Uh, the lawn and garden signs have been ordered, so we'll start that in June, that's just a reminder that, uh, anytime that, that you have a, a picture for June, let me know, and we'll take care of that.
When do you want your picture by?
June eighth.
You said one each, right?
One each, yeah.
You got mine, right?
I got yours, yeah. Wow, Gabe was so early, I don't know what's taking you guys so long.
Wow, is that your husband?
John Young's son, yeah.
Right?
He's still this front yard.
Very nice, dude. Peace out, Roger. My yard's gonna get a letter this year.
So, then, uh, we, we're not able to, uh, to use the kids from high school for the brush pickup, we're going to do it in-house. The schedule will be June eighth and ninth, which is Monday and Tuesday, will be for the west side of the township and the township area of Grand River. June tenth, eleventh, and twelfth will be for the east side of the township.
You want to eight and nine?
One more time, eighth and ninth?
Eighth and ninth will be for the west side and the Grand River area of Pageville Township.
Okay.
And then, eleventh and twelfth will be for the east side of the township.
Is it leaf, right, brush?
Brush.
Brush. Bundle rules?
Uh, bundle, not more than four foot lengths. One time, pass.
No grass, no, um, no bags for, um, leaves or anything?
Right, no leaves. I, I accept, if people wanna put a bunch of little sticks in the bags, it's easier for us to pick up the bag and for them to try to bundle them, so, it's just that you don't want grass this time, or leaves, I'm sorry, leaves, or grass.
Frank, alright, can you say that at the public meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so the Hammond Park sign, um, I talked to the lady that's in charge of the softball league, and they're planning on opening up their season on June twenty-seventh, they're allowed to start practicing on May twenty-sixth or six?
Yeah.
It is, um, so if we're, if we want our sign up by the, by their first day of their.
It's set this week, right?
Uh, I just need to, to know what the wording is, and then we'll need to pick a location, and we'll have it made, and have it up by, by that day.
What day they can practice, May what?
Twenty-eight, twenty-six?
Six.
Okay.
Has the, when is that property closed, when is it ours?
Well, uh, soon. It's supposed to close on the twenty-first, but yesterday, Neil Conway found a problem with the property description, uh, and he was working on that. So, it's supposed to close the twenty-first, it's probably gonna be a few days after that, um, but, I mean, we're imminent, it's, it's, it's gonna be ours in the next week. Uh, I would like to ask, uh, what are we gonna, who does the scheduling if Riverside High School calls and says, well, we'd like our baseball team to practice there? Because in the, because the, the baseball teams and some other teams can start practicing in a few weeks, but they can't use the school facilities. So, if I were them, I'd say, well, we've got that nice baseball field over there, we'll go practice, so then it's a matter of who's scheduling with the Concord League and that.
The Concord League puts a sign up, uh.
Yeah, when they're gonna use it?
Saying that only, there are people, only the, the league is allowed to use it after it's been lined each day.
Over, when it's, once they line it, not any time, they'll line it for the games, and they'll say, don't put a sign, sign says no use till, because they, they pay for the lining of it.
Yeah, what do we tell Riverside, if they call, I just.
Well, I, I'll ask.
That, that's, that's not a good spot for, for high school kids.
Those kids will cringe, that, those are for softball and younger, younger kids.
Okay, that's just.
I'm sorry, foul ball, to be going.
I was gonna say, yeah, there's no real good backstop and fast pitch and stuff over there, that's a softball field.
Is Concord Softball donating money to the park? Or they're just maintaining, they're maintaining the?
Take care of it.
So, they're doing the dirt and lining and all that, right? Okay.
We, we are helping them, though. Um, we are going to form for the concrete pad for their new shed.
Right.
And they had asked to, um, that they were like concrete pads where the benches are, so, we're going to remove those benches now. They're in the ground with metal, we'll take the tractor over and pull those out, and form a pad, I think the, for the benches, it's gonna be four by fifteen, there'll be six of those, and a, a pad for the shed. They've got the shed donated, and somebody's going to build it for them for free. Um, the concrete is being donated, and our guys are going to, as long as the concrete can be delivered, on the day that we're scheduled to work, we'll go over there and, uh, smooth the concrete out. So, that's.
Which ben, which benefits everybody in Long Island, because it'll be there for everybody's use, and if they're getting all the material paid for, they get to win for sure, so.
You have no zoning issues, because it's township property, putting out a shed on, right?
There's a shed already there, they're just replacing, they're gonna tear it down, the old one with the new one.
Does the shed need to be on a concrete pad, or can't they just put it on stone?
Well, they're getting the concrete donated, right?
They're, they're paying for the concrete, get it donated.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it keeps the bottom of it from rotting out.
Right.
With the rags sitting by it.
I think it's better on concrete than, than, uh, surface where water can get in, because then they don't be rotting, and then what's the deal with that, so, I think it's better on concrete.
Well, I don't know that we would have to deal with anything if it's not our shed. I mean, I would be careful.
If they leave or they're done, then it's our shed, and now what? We gotta rot a shed to deal with, instead of a shed that's nice and on a concrete pad.
Uh, uh, do we need some sort of agreement, Jeremy, I mean, if, this is our property, and somebody else is putting a structure on it, what happens, who, who's liable for it? Uh, what happens if the softball league walks away, is it, doesn't become ours, or is it always theirs? I got a lot of questions on that.
Yeah, I would have to look into that a little bit, but I think we probably should have some sort of agreement, so we all know who's liable, you know, if they build it and it falls on somebody, you know, is, who's liable for that, so, uh, let me do a little research on that, and then I do think we should come up with some sort of agreement that delineates who's responsible for what, once we do it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll just wait to hear what we want the sign to say.
Yeah.
On the site and everything. Okay, uh, June first, the service department's going back to five days a week, seven to three-thirty.
Okay.
And when we do that, I'm still not ready to put the guys out there on Saturdays with a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five people coming in.
Right.
Sign them in, help them unload.
Right.
Everybody's got a story, they wanna talk.
Right, I know, right.
Right, right close to you, so, for the month of June at least, I'll just have one guy work on Saturdays, and he'll just be there to open the gate, push the pile up, close the gate.
Okay.
And that will be, that part through June, but, uh, June first, we are ready to get back to the normal schedule, and we got a lot of work to catch up on.
Yeah, I think that's a good way, I think that's a good way to do it.
Yep.
Um, I was originally, there was gonna be a resolution on here for hiring two summer help, but one of them called Friday and said that he, he took another job, um, he got off of the full-time position, started right away, as opposed to waiting to June first, and not with the uncertainty of what's happening, so, I, I've got one that's ready to start June first. My question is, if I find another one, and I want him to start June first, do I need a resolution for him to start June first, or could we make it retroactive at that meeting, that June first was his start date?
I think re, retroactive, right?
Retroactive, if we can legally do it.
Yeah, we can do it retroactive, as long as he gets all the pre-employment stuff done.
Okay, he won't get paid until, like, July first, whatever the last payday is?
Well, no, we'll meet June, June nineteenth.
June nineteenth.
Oh, that's right, it's one of you. They can pay.
You guys get paid.
So, we can hire him, and then make it retroactive.
Yeah, there we go.
You can hire with payment and then just retroactive.
Okay, okay. Alright, I will, uh, I'll start working on trying to find somebody else?
I mean, technically speaking, with all this going on, while we have it used to our advantage, couldn't he just, as soon as you get somebody, Mike, publish a meeting, and by Zoom, we could all log in, do a meeting, pass a resolution to hire the guy, so that there's no issues, you could do it that way, it'd take two seconds, you know what I'm saying?
I wonder.
If you'd rather it be done ahead of time, doesn't it matter to me?
It doesn't matter, unless there's any legalities with that, Jeremy.
No, we could, we could definitely do that, if we just did a real quick one, with just that.
Just out of curiosity, if the employee were to get hurt before we pass the resolution, does that become an issue?
Um, it would still just be covered by workers' comp.
Okay.
Just like it normally would be.
Either way.
Okay, alright, whatever you wanna do, it's all good.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we started, uh, we, we put the speed trailer out for the first time last Wednesday over on Birch Drive, um, my plan was to pull this card out and download all the information, and have it available for you today, but, we, we got to figure out how to get that information. When we practiced with it, uh, hardy room, we were able to get the information, um, that information is still on that card, there's a way to get it. Maybe Sean can help us get it.
But, uh.
But when I get that information, so the way that speed trailer's set up.
Woodworks?
It doesn't, it doesn't write up a speed until, uh, well, as soon as you, until you hit twenty miles an hour. At twenty-seven miles an hour, it starts blinking, when you're going over the speed, and then it won't register any speed over forty, that's where we have it set. And the reason for that is to discourage people to see how fast they can register their speed.
It's still recording the actual speed.
Oh, it's, it's, it's telling you, yes, it's still recording it, it's just displaying that to turn it into a.
Palmer, yeah. They had it up to what, it was like incredible, that short little stretch, a couple of years, I remember the sheriff told us.
Well, I'll tell you what, they drive it fast without the speed trail, I couldn't believe when they said what, they were registering people who were over fifty on that little street, something.
So, we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll, we'll get the information, but it is available, if, if, I'll, I'll just pick another street unless, uh, unless you guys have one, we're gonna put it in a newsletter to let people know that, that they can request it if, if they want.
Yeah, I'll think you want to request us, Neil.
Hey, Neil.
Complaints, I think we would just get it that way.
Once, uh, you're looking for someplace to put it, if overlook, I'm sorry, not overlook, if Nelmar's done, you wanna stick it out there in the newly paved area? I had somebody comment how great it was, it was smooth, and then they commented how fast cars will go.
I was like, that, I, I was just on the road Sunday night, and, and that is probably one of the smoothest roads that I've driven, I mean, you're driving on it, and your car doesn't even make a noise, it's crazy, like, we're top, um, Nelmar, new road, I've never seen that quality of, uh, pavement before, it's crazy. Who did that, cargo, curb rail?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
That is like.
And, and they did a really good job. And, and they did a really good job on Fruitland, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've been, so with all the rain we have, and I've been driving on these new roads, and there really aren't any, any issues where they've got a low spot where there's water laying, I mean, little birdbaths, we call them, they're just little puddles, but nothing, nothing bad, I think they, I think they did a good job. They got some cleanup to do, they've got some small issues they gotta take care of, it still has to be burned, but I was pretty happy with, with the project. And down at the service drive, they got that water running through the basins. I mean, they nailed it. It's running, running down there good. The job on Trotter, Rhino Path and Morgan started this morning. They started ripping the concrete out on the north side, so.
So I got a phone call, I had called you yesterday about it, and a gentleman was, rumors are flying, and so what he was told was, they're not doing curb and gutter, they're running the asphalt right up into the driveways.
Oh, no.
So, yeah, I clarified it with him, and he understood, and it was all good.
And, and they're gonna be happy, because when, the older concrete roads have a, a high curve to drive over, and these new ones, it's only about an inch, they taper it down, they give you a new apron back to the first joint. So, I, I think they will be happy once they see it.
Good, good. Yeah, after I explained it all to him, when we spoke, and I spoke with Josh too.
Yeah.
That's the information, and he appreciated it, and he was good, he said, you know, rumors are flying, they're gonna start doing crazy stuff.
Yeah, so Ted had called me, and said that he had got three complaints about, you know, the asphalt road going in, and people were afraid it was gonna lower their property values, but I, I don't know, I.
I don't think they know.
I think it's gonna be good.
Explain all the new developments, they're going that way. I mean, you know, over here at Cali Farms, so.
Yeah, all of them.
Not the pines, but Fairway Meadows and all that.
Does he, keep in mind, we need to stay on top of, I guess, the county, so that we get an invoice for that project in the next couple of weeks. We turn it around immediately, Mike, we gotta make sure we get that down to OPWC.
I will, same idea, I get it, it's a form, you know, it takes me a while, but, no, I, I know it's a priority. And I think the paving companies do too, they, they know they gotta get their invoices in if they wanna get paid.
Well, I, I think they are under the impression they're getting paid regardless. Whether or not, we get reimbursed or not, they don't particularly care about, so.
All right, and then, the, with all the rain we had, we had problems on Paradise and Heatherstone and Wintergrain. Heatherstone's been kind of an ongoing thing. ODOT put a new pipe underneath throughout eighty-four, I'm guessing three years ago, and since then, there's been an issue with a couple houses on Heatherstone, getting a lot of runoff. So I'm meeting with Stormwater there today, and with another area in Heatherstone, and we're gonna see if Stormwater can find out if, if ODOT increased the size of the pipe when they ran that new pipe under the road, and what has changed, because the people have lived there for a long time, and up until the new pipe went in, they haven't had the issues that they're.
What kind of damage do they have?
Other waters, they're right at the base of the hill, coming off eighty-four.
Okay.
And the water, there's a, a natural ravine there, where the water's coming out there, and then just running between their houses and flooding the road, and bringing a lot of debris out of the woods and depositing in the yard. Real bad, we had to actually take a machine down there to clear the debris off the road. This time it wasn't as bad, but we need to.
So, so when I drove up there, was it Saturday when the big rain hit out there?
Friday.
It was Friday?
Yes.
Anyhow, the, the eastbound lane up eighty-four, I think between Paradise and Orton down there in that area, that was like, not the whole stretch, but portions of it, that entire lane was underwater. And I've never seen it like that, I don't know if that's typical, but.
It is.
I drove up there to see Paradise.
They, they just put high water signs up, covered up, and I don't, and I don't know what, if there is a thing.
It's always been like that?
Yeah, it's, it's always.
Yeah, oh my god, I can't believe, well, I can't believe I've seen it.
Yeah. So, then, the, the, the project we have on Paradise that we've been talking about, the next step, I think, is, is the township has to request through Stormwater if this is going to be considered a project, and if it is, to take the next step for design and, and cost estimates.
Let me get plugged into this meeting, I have to put something up on the screen.
Plug it.
Leave my camera now, leave my microphone. I just wanna be able to put something up there. So what, so I was up on. Bear with me for just a second, please. All right, someone present, bear with me, can figure this out now. One here, share. Could see something here in a moment. Like it doesn't wanna share, why is that? I'm trying to, I'm trying to put a picture up on the screen, and it shows on my computer that it's, it's there, it's just not working. Sean, are you there? All right, well, so I started off, you kinda went a little quick on me there, let's try again, Sean. So I started off with present now, at the bottom of this, this Google screen, and it's currently grayed out. And then it popped up, and it said, which window, so I, I selected the picture that I wanted. No, that's gone, screw it. All right, well, my, my present now button is grayed out. And I can't undo it. All right, so we'll get it now, so present now. So I'm gonna hit a window, right? Okay, it brings up which window, so I won't select this one. Yeah, all right, dude, it's not working, just peck with it, I'm not gonna waste any more time, I'll just talk this through it. So, um. Whatever, all right, so anyhow, so last year, what, when was that, Bill, July?
July thirteenth.
All right, so July is notorious for stormwater, big rains, although we got one, a big one this last weekend, but I was called by some residents who live up on Paradise, just east of Hickory Hill. So the two houses just east of Hickory Hill, it's a corner lot, and the one to the right of it. Jeff Lyons is the, actually, it's not the corner lot, so it'd be the, the two lots past the corner, so three houses over, anyhow. A lot of stormwater issues coming down there, 'cause water comes off Hickory Hill, and then it goes into the house, that's Jeff Lyons' house, who lives up on Paradise Hill. And then, from there, it goes to the neighbor's, supposed to go to the neighbor's property, Don, Get Don's last name, Lombard or something. Anyhow, Get Don's last name, but it goes there, and then it works itself over to Orton underneath Gene Bush's house, property, and then it goes over to Orton, it's supposed to go. The problem is, is this guy, Jeff Lyons, his house is, his basement is flooding, and so he has spent now, the last year, over seven thousand dollars to create drainage around his house. And he dug in the front of his house, right near the road, back about twenty-five feet. He dug a twelve by twelve by either six or eight basin, so to speak, and it's filled with rocks. So he has all the water drained from his property into this basin, and that basin fills up, and then it drains off into Don's property, and then it heads east over to Orton eventually. The problem is, it's not making it over there all the way, there's some other issues he's working on with Don, that's something that Bill helped me with, and Stormwater helped, about getting the proper size for a pipe to put in Don's driveway, so the water will flow over. But last year, in July, we had Stormwater come out, and Stormwater came down there looking at, cause, all right, let me back up a step. So right in front of Jeff Lyons' home, there's a basin by the road, a cat basin. And the water from there is supposed to go west. So that's like the end of the run, it takes the water from that basin and descends it west, back underneath Hickory Hill, and then from there, it goes down the hill over to Hickory Hill, and is supposed to work itself off to a drain. So last year, Stormwater was talking about, they're looking at adding another basin and taking it under Hickory, or under Paradise, or whatever, and get it out of that area, by adding another basin, another exit. The concern they had was, they didn't know what was gonna happen with that water, once it left Paradise. And so, they haven't gotten back with us, so I asked Bill to look at it further. But what it might come down to is, we're gonna have to look at some Stormwater money to address this issue, if we decide to address the issue. So that's what I was talking about with Bill.
Yeah.
So Bill is, Bill, you take it from here now?
So then, I, I think the next step is that we need to request through Tim Miller at Stormwater that if this is going to be a, if this could be considered a regional project, and be covered with Stormwater funds, that ask them to hire a design engineer to design the project and give us some cost estimates.
So, can I ask a question here?
Yes.
Is the property, is it the northeast corner of Paradise and Hickory?
It's, so there's a, there's a house on the corner, go to the house just to the right of it.
The house on the corner, and the last name is McMahon, and then the next house east, be Jeff Lyons.
Jeff Lyons.
Okay, and I know during, when we had the paving project going on up there, the northwest corner of that intersection seemed to pond water and had issues.
So if you take that property, the northwest corner, Josh, and you go two lots to your left, the very next lot and, and the second lot over, so the, the first two houses there on Paradise, west of Hickory Hill, they literally had, and that's one of the pictures I wanted to show you, they had lakes from the road all the way back to their property, a little ways, and those houses sit up high on the hill. So it's not a flooding issue for the homes, but at that point, it's, the whole driveways are covered and are well underwater.
Cause I think the guy at the northeast corner had a lot done too recently, didn't he? I thought, I remember seeing him cutting a lot of trees and putting some pipes in, maybe.
Um, well, no, there was, he, he bought a trees down.
That's Lyons. Right? Lyons loved all the trees in the back.
Yes, but right at the corner, that guy cut some trees. He didn't do what Lyons did, he just had some dead trees he had removed, and so. Josh, are you looking at this on the GIS?
I am now, yeah.
Okay, so, the house, if, if you were going south on Hickory, and you drove straight across the street into that driveway, Tom Cotter lives there.
Yes.
There's a ravine just to the east of his property.
West?
That's where Stormwater said, if we could intercept that water that's heading west and send it through that ravine, we'd be able to get, get more depth and be able to get rid of that water quicker.
Okay. So I guess I'd be on board with getting Stormwater, cause like I said, I know it looks like McMahon's at the northeast corner, and then Lyons is one to the right. Then across Hickory, there's a vacant property that McMahon owns, and, and that had a lot of water sitting next to the road.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, but, but that just got ditches draining down there.
Okay.
This would, this would help that too.
So, it's right, so right there, it's a multiple properties, and I think it can be a regional thing?
So part of the problem, I'm just gonna offer it up to speed for hope and transparency. Part of the problem, I think, is some of the work that was done on, on private properties. But, it's a bigger problem than that, and my lord, what Bill showed, what Bill showed over on Orton was just unbelievable. It was a stinking, literally a river down in Orton. So it's that whole, it's that whole area, and I realize it's a problem all over the place up there, and there's always so much that can be done, but in this case here, the guy has, the guy has dug a trench around the back of his house. He's leveled a bunch of trees, and that's a whole other issue, if you drive up there, you'll see what I'm referring to. But behind the back of his house, he, he literally has like a moat, and he's, he's trenched all the way around his property, around his home, and then he's running all that water, which comes off the hill, to the front of his property, and there it's sitting. So I explained to him how basins work, and how the water will drain out of a basin over twenty-four to forty-eight hours. So he didn't understand, that's how basins work with, with what he created. I went back the next day, and that was all dried out, so that was good. Bill and I were up there, Bill was there a couple times, so Bill and I were up there the other day looking at it. So, it's functioning like a basin, but he's still getting water in his basin. I just think there's something we can do, based upon what Stormwater told us last year when they came up in July. They said, they were looking right at that property, so, I'm looking at like GIS also, Josh. So, it would be the one at Joseph Havas, Joseph and Donna Havas, the second lot over from Hickory Hill. Either that one, or the one past it, which would be Merton, but right in that area, they were talking about doing something. So then we go down further towards, towards that cul-de-sac, Bill did some work on the basin, on the property of O'Brien, and cleaned, cleaned some of that out. So he changed the pipe tubing and helped a little bit, but this is just further work with that. There you go. You wanna talk, Josh, you're looking at it?
No, no, I was just pulling up as, since I was looking at it, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to see it.
Okay, so the, where I told you we're gonna go across the road there, Josh, just past Tom Cotter, there's a ravine there, and then he followed us contours, it eventually goes into that, one of the twin lakes, there. And there's, so that was the, the biggest concern with Stormwater, who had to make sure we weren't gonna cause any problems farther downstream. But I think we'll be okay with that, but obviously, if we get a, somebody did design it, they'll look at all that and take that into consideration.
Okay.
So I guess the next step then, is if, if we're all on board, we'll, we'll send a letter or request to Stormwater to get started along the way. And I'll, I'll follow up with that, and everybody's good?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause like I said, this is the property I was thinking of, that is vacant, but there was a lot of water sitting around here that, if we address something here, that it can correct this issue as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to pick that water up just through, well, there's a pipe that runs through there now. That pipe runs from the, side of Mr. Lyons' property all the way down to. Keep going, keep going, keep going, we got a pipe going, keep going, crosses the road right there.
Okay.
Try to intercept it.
Who was that, Mike?
That was mine.
Guilty, guilty. Hey, all right, hey, Josh, one more point there, so, house number two seventy-six, Paradise. In front of those, it sounds like, to your left, right there. Hey, all right, hey Josh, one more point there, so house number two seventy-six Paradise, in front of those, it sounds like to your left, right there. Click that, I think that's it. Is that two seventy-six?
Yes.
All right, so that house there, if you look at the front on Google, match what the house looks like. There was, they didn't complain or say anything, but while I was looking at all of this, the water from those two houses across the street was literally flooding across the road and it was streaming down this guy's driveway, right towards his garage, just before it got to his garage and banked a left into the ravine to the left of his house. So it'd be just east of his house, yeah. So I mean, it was, I was just amazed when I was watching. From what I could tell, it didn't go into his garage, but it was headed that way. So I guess the idea then is to, is to intercept all that water and do something with it to get it out of there, if, if we can, so that's what I'm looking at. Okay?
Okay, I will follow up with that and that's all I have today.
You're done?
Yes.
All right, so let's run over then to our favorite zoning folks and run there. Who wants to run there? Harley or Richard? Or both?
Well, this is Rich, I, I just went live Harley, I think your, your mic is on, do you wanna start?
Um, okay, I can start, are we talking about, sorry, the girls in the background. Rich, would you like to start?
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll take it. First thing I, I was gonna talk about is the Painesville Speedway who wants to go into the drive-in movie business on a temporary basis, or they wanted to. I kept asking them for their plan so that we would know what they intend to do, how they intend to operate. They sent something to the health department. I have the email that showed that there were attachments and they expected me to be able to read attachments that weren't really attached to anything. Anyhow, I, I kept reaching out to them, asking for plans and Denise Maggio sent me an email late yesterday saying that when they found out how extravagant the cost of going into the drive-in movie business was, they decided not to pursue it, so that is now off the table. One other thing that came up, we've got a excavating company who, who rented the single building near Provision over on West Jackson Street. Next door to Provision, on the west side of Provision, there's a separate building that used to be occupied by at one time a preschool and another time by a church and another time by a software company. Now a excavation contractor wants to set that building up as his company headquarters and, and he's got some accessory storage, like outdoor storage uses, where he, he wants to be able to lay down some supplies like pipe and so forth and store his, most of his equipment and trucks inside the building along with tools and supplies and his general offices. Needless to say, it's on the Viviani Family Partnership light industrial site on West Jackson and Viviani still doesn't seem to understand that when he rents property, you have to get a zoning permit. So the guy started occupying and started clearing some of the wooded area behind the building which caught the attention of Tim Hannah who lived a few doors away. And Tim questioned the fifty-foot buffer. So this guy can easily stay away from the, maintain that fifty-foot buffer with, with his operation. Building is already inside that property. We will not inform him. We consulted with Jeremy and Jason on this. Jason did a little bit of research and he said, well, and Jason you can jump in anytime you want, but your, your research indicated that an excavation contractor was then a listed use in the light industrial. But you know, I, I am kinda thinking that as a general headquarters for a company that has accessory uses like storage of equipment, some of, most outdoor storage, similar to like landscaping contractors, I mean, they gotta have a place to go and if they're making that their business headquarters instead of trying to run it out of their residential property, doesn't that make sense?
Well, I mean, yes, so, so an I-1, you know, the closest permissible use to, to an excavating company would just be general offices which are allowed in an I-1. You know, as far as the storage goes, I guess there's, there's a couple of issues. So you're allowed, you know, accessory uses, but those are limited to those that are clearly incidental and second, secondary to the main use. You know, so their problem there would be, you know, is storage of this equipment incidental and secondary to, to operating a general office building, you know, there's an argument to be made there that it is. To me, the, the other issue is, you know, outdoor storage is only listed as a conditional use for a commercial district, so a B1, B2, or B3. So I'm not sure they would be even able, you know, they might have to get a variance in order to do that outside storage. Then the other issue is, is section twenty-five ten C. It talks about anytime an I-1 district abuts a residential district, which is, which is what we have here or seek a variance on or, or something, but those are kind of all the, kind of moving parts with this one, it isn't kind of a straight answer, I don't think.
Well, I can, real quick, if I can interject, I know a guy that owns a excavating company, his office is down on Pinecombe in Mentor. And he has an office building attached to a pretty large building where they keep stuff at and there's still out back, large tractors, backhoes, trailers, et cetera. I really question if an excavating company would be able to operate on that parcel with the amount of equipment that they're gonna have and not just end up getting out of control. That's my concern.
Yeah, and from what I understand, there's not, it's not, it's outdoor storage we're talking about here, you know, there's, there is no building to kinda hide it. You know, and there's also obviously screening requirements, you know, you gotta plant something to, in between that residential district and, and whatever they're gonna, you know, end up being allowed to do. But I mean, at the very least, they need to submit something and let's see, let's see the plans, what's, what do you guys have in mind and then we can kinda go from there.
Okay, I, I gave them the application form and went, I actually went there and physically met with them. That, that property backs up to the CSX Railroad hotline. There, there's no siding right there, but it is the main line. And, and that's gonna limit their growth, there is room, especially if they enlarge an existing overhead door and put another one in. They, they can get their trucks and equipment, this is not a large excavation contractor. And they feel very comfortable that they'll be able to stay out of that buffer zone with their storage of materials and equipment behind the building and, and be comfortable on that property for quite some time. So we'll see, I mean, we should get an application in so we could start reviewing it and see what we have to do with it from there. I, I did the hang up, hang, pick up and hang up.
That's not me then.
That sounded like a number from somebody who I've been communicating with email-wise. Hello? Call back later. I, I'm in a meeting, bye. I know. I think that the fence contractor who wants to put a fence somewhere where I don't want him to put it. Okay, anyhow, so we've got that in the works and, and we'll take a look at that when we get the paperwork in. Nothing on Painesville Speedway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try this present now Sean, so I can put up the email. I sent letters to everyone who's got property contiguous to the Safe Store proposed site explaining what was going on, that we've got the similar use petition, offering to give them, provide copies of the Safe Store petition, strike layout plan and architectural rendering. I've only had, Dave Williams, who owns the three acres to the east of this proposed site, did inquire and asked me to send him everything, he had no commentary. I, I finally received one email comment from a resident behind that site yesterday afternoon. So didn't have too much time to get into too much discussion with her, but I, I sent everybody a copy. Let's see, a Chrome tab, can I put this on a Chrome tab? I, I didn't put it in the tab. How's that? Chuck that, I can do that buddy. Okay, so this is the email, she lives directly behind, has kids that play in the backyard. She doesn't believe that this is a B1 type of use and she has concern, security concerns with what could potentially be kept in the storage units as well as the people it may attract to the area. So that is there for your consideration trustees. Other than that, I, I have been advised by, I'll, I'll take that off now, cause, cause I know I sent that to y'all. Anyhow, I, I've been advised by the Safe Store people that they have the conditional use permit application package ready to get to me by tomorrow, if the decision that you made today is favorable to their similar use petition. And that's about all I have.
And then I will try to sneak in really quickly. I am going into the office processing permit applications, I will be in the office again this evening actually. There are a couple of complaints that I am handling, but other than that I have been leaning a lot on Rich lately as I'm going through some, a personal situation, but you know, doing, doing the best that I can. And I think that's about it, we've, Rich has been a hu, a huge help in, in, in pulling some of the weight on the software meetings, but moving forward, I, I definitely shouldn't have an issue being a hundred percent attentive to, to all of those meetings moving forward. That's, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Is there any, sorry, is there any update on the Mitch Daniels proposal off Jackson Street, Rich? You're still muted, you're muted, Rich?
Sorry about that. Yeah, I gotta notice, I've gotta double check my calendar. I think this week there's a planning commission meeting by Cisco Webex or video conference that we've been turned into, do you want me to shoot you the sign-in information? Do you, you wanna look at that?
Yeah, go ahead and do that, I mean, I, so I looked at that site plan. And it looks like he's proposing an uncurbed asphalt public roadway. I don't know, I don't know what the required dimensions of a cul-de-sac for a public road, but it, it didn't look like the nicest development. Trying to shoehorn stuff in there.
I, I think he's applying for a variance too. For a roadway or a curb cut that's less than two hundred and fifty feet from another existing street.
That sounds like a bad idea, doesn't it?
Well, it'll, it'll put a variance, right now I don't think the county can let them put the street in, in that location without a variance.
Why is it a bad idea?
It, it's not good to have streets really tight spaced, you create issues with vehicles turning in and out.
Why don't you elaborate on that thought Josh?
Yeah, could you?
Yeah, hold on.
That's a rather vague response.
Yeah, it is.
We're trying to tap into your brilliance, as limited as that might be.
I'm trying to figure out how to share something here, I'm having Chuck problems.
I mean, how far apart is Ny Road in this apartment, this condo complex here? Somewhere two hundred and fifty feet.
This, I think this goes between Ny Road and Waldorf.
No, I'm saying though, we're talking about huge multifamily living places, how far are these two entrances?
Yeah, so in general, there are spacing requirements between intersections. Just for flow reasons.
Yeah, I mean, you look, we're looking across the street, Ny Road Apartments and the condo complex, huge multifamily developments and I, those gotta be at least two fifty or closer, the entrances there.
Well, those are private drives and this is a public roadway.
I get it, but they're gonna handle way less people than this street will coming out, if the concern is people turning in and out. Ny Road has, I don't know how many dozens of apartments in there, thus that, that number of cars, we're talking one, two, three, four, five, what, five lots?
Well, so, so my concern is, I don't particularly like the idea of shoehorning five lots in this little stub street in here. So if it doesn't comply, it doesn't comply, is my thought.
But from a maintenance issue, Bill doesn't have an issue with it, so what, where's the issue that you would have? Bill says he has no problem with them maintaining it. So what, I'm just trying to find out what the issues would be.
The question is, is what, is it, is they gonna have a cul-de-sac that meets the, you know, the requirements for, for size? They can't put a cul-de-sac in there that, that's small. And I, I thought the county had some regulations on that.
There's measurements on there, isn't there?
Looks like half of it's a sixty-foot radius and half's a fifty-foot radius. Rich, do you know what our requirement is on? It's a fifty-foot radius cul-de-sac.
We, we don't have, we don't have a cul-de-sac requirement for the township. Standard, the county has, has the cul-de-sac requirements. And I think the standard cul-de-sac is a one hundred and twenty-foot diameter.
So they're?
Ten feet off.
Ten foot off on a radius, yeah.
So they just have to cut those lots up a little bit, so.
I mean, so, but you're, you're, you're putting a road in with houses on one side. Now, this, this property here, now, now, again, it's the, well, if you don't like it, you can buy the property. Um, but now their backyard becomes a side yard right next to a street. I don't, I don't think this fits that area. I mean, you're shoehorning.
And what are they gonna do along the road there? That's, that's gonna be grass. How big is that buffer and what are they gonna do there? If they're gonna put landscaping and trees, I think that's kind of makes it move there.
Uh, can I put a lot of landscaping within our right of way? Cause it'd be our right of way, right? They're proposing a public road.
That drawing that, we, was that a, a, a drive?
Uh, no, this, I took a picture of a drawing that was in the office.
Okay. I mean, so who is this, who is this getting presented to?
To the county. This went to the county. To the, to the planning commission. As a subdivision, they, they don't need to change the zoning.
So zoning as is, they're okay. So what are they going to planning commission for? They, what's the variance they require? The curb cut, that's it?
Well, if, they have, they have to, they have to get subdivision approval. I mean, this isn't operating one lot.
Okay, but they're meeting, so they would meet our zoning for this type of zoning. So they don't require, uh, P U D, right?
Right.
Okay.
Each of these sublots meets the R one zoning district's requirements.
So really, the, the planning commission, they'll come back with the recommendations.
Right.
So hopefully they'll catch all that and then he'll have to cut his lots. Right?
Hopefully.
All right, well, we'll wait and see what the planning commission says. I mean, that's what we rely on most, for most anyways, so let's wait and see what they say, that's my, uh.
Yeah, if he meets the zoning, he tried to put, um, multifamily in there originally, we gave that a thumbs down. So now he's gone back and he's gonna go, okay, well then I'm gonna do residential.
Which is what we told him to do.
Which is what we told him to do. He had, he's meeting the regulations, so um, I mean, short of the road and the other part, so planning commission comes back and strikes that, he'll have to just reduce his lots a little bit.
I mean, technically speaking, he can make this a private drive and be done with it, right?
I make sure.
I mean, technically speaking, he can make that a private drive and be done with it and leave it as is anyways. Right? You wanna make it a private road and just get the curb cut, but it's a private drive, so you're saying that shouldn't matter if it's a private drive with a curb cut, right, Josh?
What doesn't matter? Oh, if it was, oh, the, the intersection spacing?
Because I'm looking at these compartments and I don't think they're more than two fifty apiece apart across the street. And you said because they're a private drive, so he makes that a private drive, we'll have no say, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Let's see what happens here. I'm glad you have a picture, thanks for sharing. Um, I, I don't know if I have an issue or not, let's see what the planning commission comes back, but uh, if, if I, even if I do have an issue, I don't know what kind of leeway or, um, say we've got.
Well, I, I think, I think maybe what we wanna do is object to the planning commission and, and tell them that we don't like a reduced diameter, we don't like to reduce the lane size.
And, and that we are doing a curb and gutter with asphalt centers in our new subdivisions.
Yeah, so aren't you putting, you know, Gage, just like you're putting the cart before the horse, aren't you? Shouldn't we wait for the planning commission to come back and then respond?
No, 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 they're asked, they're, they're asking for comments, that's how we got this. They sent this drawing to us, they're asking.
Well, John says he got it from, from his office.
No, 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 from township hall. It was there last, when we had our JED meeting. I looked at it then.
All right, all right, that's a little different then.
I just, they shouldn't have put the packet so he could
Yeah, we'd like to have seen this in the, on the drive if we're gonna discuss it, right? This is all new. So, yeah, so the objectives would be, as you said, Rich, the, uh, the, the diameter of the cul-de-sac in the, in the cutaway or whatever.
I'm not worried about the cut, it's just the, the width of the road, Josh is saying a lane size and the cul-de-sac are two things that should be addressed.
Right.
All right. Take it for action.
Uh, curb and gutter too, Rich.
Okay.
I didn't know, okay, good to know, I didn't know that was with us yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else, Rich?
No, that's it.
Um, Mr. I O Sue, do you have any words of wisdom for us?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report.
When I said words of wisdom over here, Jason start doing this, I don't know what he was, if that was a signal. Okay, there we go.
Anything, you know, just, uh, going back to the normal like Bill brought up, I think our, our fire station is hopefully June first. We're gonna keep an eye on the numbers. See how many we're transporting. Right now, you know, very few. Operation is normal.
So, you know, it's a lot, I'm glad you brought that up, let's sure discuss this here. Just like before with your crew, the concern I would, that's not, we're not snow plowing now, so it's not as much of a concern. But if somebody were to get, get the COVID, then you have to quarantine.
Right.
So the way you're operating now is you're able to manage that. If you start, if you start going back to normal operations and moving people around, then we're gonna have to quarantine more and pay them and pay someone else to fill the halls, so I'm just thinking it might not be a good idea.
Right.
That's why it's
Especially for you. Yeah. Well, and like I said, that's right now, the last, well, I think we had, uh, over the weekend, they had a little uptick, there was a a week after Mother's Day, so they, they got, I think, uh, five on Saturday, five on Sunday. Calls? No, no, I'm sorry, uh, cases in the county.
Yeah.
You know, so, and then yesterday I think was two.
They had twenty the last week, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, we're, we're pretty low on the numbers, so we're putting an eye on. Uh, I'm, I'm hesitant too, I, I think, that's what I think, we just gotta keep an eye on the
The break in the weather, I'm, I'm a little hesitant with the break in the weather, just from an operational standpoint, so if I mean, please, but if, if this is working, it, it seems to be fine, yeah.
Yeah.
My like, sure is. Is the overtime.
That much, I mean, there's been a couple of shifts where I could have moved people, but I couldn't because, you know, we are not sharing stations. So as far as a lot of overtime, no, we're still down on our numbers on overtime. For the last month, we've been having less overtime than usual. Uh, and I do believe that the overtime is actually reimbursable somewhat compared to that, so.
Loss anyways, so. Okay, then I, there, there's no reason to change it. It, it creates an issue for that department, but this department makes what we got going on.
Sure.
And the overtime is reimbursable, then why not?
Yeah, I mean, I think he businesses, like we had. It's just, you know.
Isn't it business at all?
No.
That, you know, this, he's, he's, he's part of this project, gotta start, they gotta make changes.
I was just, yeah, again, just looking at where we might be getting that to normal, but it, uh, obviously there's no agree on that either, so.
Yeah, if business is interrupted and we can get the overtime and we, it costs us back, then might as well leave it at this.
So then what happens? All right, so we're gonna leave you alone, you stay as you are. Then what happens if you, Bill, if somebody were to get it, you have to quarantine the whole crew? And then what do we do? Is there a way to work around this? Impact you less than we're impacting you currently?
Yeah. So it's either half in or all in, I mean, that's what it is?
Yeah, we're, we're still taking everybody's temperature, if somebody has a
So I think the easiest way for you is you're gonna have a truck, right?
Well, I, I personally think if two guys are gonna ride in the truck, they need to be wearing masks.
Well, that's on you.
I don't wanna wear a mask up when I'm working and everything, but if you're gonna share a truck.
That's on you.
That's, that's Bill's decision, yep, I don't wanna make that decision. That way, in case there's a change you wanna make to it, it doesn't have to come back to us.
Okay, I just think the best way, the only suggestion I would give is if you're gonna ride the truck, it's just like police, you, you got partners and those two are the ones that are to get it, right? So you're at least controlling that portion of it, that's the only advice I have. Otherwise, masks and stuff, that's on you. Um, but I would just, you know, one day be, you know, John and this, and the next day, you know, the other way around, in the same truck. Yes, assign trucks, those two guys are in the truck, you know, that's the way I would do it. My advice, otherwise, everything else is on you, you know?
And I would say just my two cents, if we are gonna go back to letting two people in a truck, that we, I would recommend that we have masks if there's two people in a truck.
Yeah, I, I think that was a good, I think that's a good idea.
And I would try, if, if there's any way to avoid two people in a truck, I still would try to.
Okay.
It would work inside, so it's
They do their breaks and everything else together.
Well, what are they doing? Are they in the break room together now?
Two guys.
Yeah, there you go.
That's it. I mean, we're limiting now because there's not that many guys there, but we got, uh, outside, there's a, uh, we got cafeteria tables for school when it closed, that's in the garage, so there's
There you go.
Four different places guys can keep their social distancing.
Yeah, and cleaning, cleaning every day. I, I'm really happy with the way everybody's handling it.
I think, yeah, I think you'll be fine, you keep doing that. Limit to them, the same guys in the same truck, so you're not jumping around in trucks and they're working outside of, you know.
Follow it, but does the whole crew get it? Quarantine, or how's that work? I mean, what happens? Period. Can you? Is there a?
Yeah, I, if, if one person gets it, we would probably certainly have to, so are you keeping, I only heard, could hear parts of what you were saying, but so when we're doing two people in a truck, is it, it's always the same two people?
That's what I suggested.
We are not doing, yeah, but June first, when, when it goes back, there's going to be times when two people will be in a truck.
All right, then I would say we would probably have to quarantine those two people if either one of them get it or somebody's family has it. Uh, we'd have to have them off for two weeks.
Well, we gotta keep those together, so those two guys are, are teammates. They're like, they're partners like police officers would be.
Yeah, yeah.
Where transportation goes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't go swapping vehicles with different guys.
Right.
That way you can, you can at least control who's next to each other, but you get the full crew going back without buying five new vehicles, you know? And, 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 uh, and then they work outside, I, you know, the outside, I think, is they, you know, made very clear, you're very little, so.
And we're still doing all the temperature taken and all that stuff, right?
Yes, is it morning and shift change at, and the deep shift? I mean, that's how it is where I work at, they do, they get you in the gate and they get you out the gate. No, this is just first thing in the morning.
Before they come in.
Yeah.
Why don't we, if, if we're gonna switch back to a little bit more normal operations, let's, maybe we should switch to doing it beginning and end of shift. Just to be safe as we make the transition.
Do you wanna do it be out in the morning and then before they go back to after lunch? So that way at the end of the day, they don't have to try to round everybody up. They're already all together in the building somewhat at lunchtime. Could you do it then?
Well, they're
Yeah.
Going at the end of the day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, either way.
And then that would be the
Twice a day then.
At, at this point, if somebody has a, a high temperature in the morning and they go home, it's seven days before we let them go back, so
Right.
This would be the same.
Why seven days? So they reckon I thought it was, I thought it was, um, fourteen days. That's if you're diagnosed.
Yeah.
That's if you have it. If you're diagnosed. Seven days is just an elevated temperature.
Yeah, then.
Okay. And that has happened.
Okay. Well, that needs to sound like you got it under control.
Okay, all right, all good. So you're staying as you are, and then June first, you're going.
Yep.
Returning, okay.
Yeah.
Start the meeting here in five minutes, if there's nothing else, um, then adjourn this meeting until we open back up at eleven for the
Everybody will have to log off and log back in.
Yeah, you have to log off of this one, log back on to the next one. See when you get back, bye.
Hey, Bill, will you, the guy you've been in contact with, the vault one oh four, will you at least ask him to secure, make sure the door's secure? I had another neighbor just texted me that
Okay, I'm surprised, Chris.